I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. Could we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think on the chairman's announcement, I just want to make note that there was a great turnout at the town meeting, I think, record turnout, and for all the support staff from our town clerk and all the folks did the checking in, did a great job, and town moderator as well. So, next item, citizens' form, anybody wish to talk on anything that's not currently on our agenda? All right, seeing none, move forward. Entertain a motion to open public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number five, FY 2026 tax classification hearing and possible votes.
Just looking for the screen share.
They may need to give that to you.
Yeah. She was supposed to be, oh, there we go.
All right. There we go. So, we're here for the fiscal year 2026 classification hearing. So, as always, a little bit in overview of the building blocks of the tax rate and then methodology for setting the tax rate. If I'm not speaking loud enough, I have a little bit of a cold, so I don't know if I'm yelling or whispering, so give me a hand signal if you can't hear me.
Just pull the mic in. That would be easier, just in case the folks at home can't hear you.
All right.
Perfect.
So, every year for setting a tax rate, we're required to be certified by the Department of Revenue every five years. It's what's called a certification year, shorthand, they call it a reval year. We do set values every single year, but every five years, it's an audit, but people have called that the reval year. But we do set values every single year. As far as setting the tax rate, it's simple math. The total amount of money we can collect in taxes of the tax levy divided by the taxable value of all real and personal property in town multiplied by 1,000, that's the tax rate. I'm going to focus first on the denominator in this, because that's where most of my work is, is as the assessor, assessing the value of the properties. The primary tool we use is a sales analysis, this is a statistical analysis, and for Douglas, our largest class of properties is single-family homes, obviously. That, we have to have an assessment of sales ratio between 90 and 110, realistically, between 90 and 100, because we wouldn't go over 100%. And then coefficient of dispersion, which is just a statistical measure of how broad our spectrum is, how tight we are, has to be below 10. So for FY, that should be 26, not 25. Oh, I'm sorry, that is for 25. We're 2,855 parcels, 103 of those parcels sold for more than $1,000. 85 were what I considered arms length, arms length, so not foreclosures, not bank sales, not family sales, not sales to neighbors. We need 2% of sales to be statistically significant enough to have a proper analysis. We're at 2.98, so we're good there. You can see we have an ASR of 0.91, or roughly 91% of market value for our assessment. If you've listened to my presentation in the past, you know I normally target mid-90s. I'll show you why we're a little low this year, but we're still within the guidelines and, you know, COD is 8.44, you'll see below. Condos are at 0.94, two families are at 0.95, and vacant land is also at 0.91 with single-family homes. Each one of those subclasses need to be within five percentage points of our largest class at 0.91, and still fall within that 0.90 to 1.1, 1.1. Where you see these zeros, that just means there's no sales, so those would have just moved with the overall market in town. We take the changes in the models to make the sales analysis work, we apply that to the rest of the properties in town, and that's how we get, come up with the values for everything. You can see here, we've crossed and highlighted in yellow, $2 billion is the total valuation of all taxable real and personal property in town, so that's the first time we've ever hit that threshold. And then down the bottom there, you can see all the exempt parcels, so town-owned land, churches, exempt clubs, another $171 million. How does this translate into values that people are more familiar with? On FY 25, the average home value was 471,000. And I, let me apologize now, I don't think I've made it to the slide. A couple of numbers that didn't get updated and weren't emailed, so I'll send you an updated copy for the record. Average value in '26 is 121,000 for 50,000, $500 difference. Here's where we're at, why we're at the 9.1%. You can see we went up 10.7%, almost 11%. Really didn't want to keep trying to push that number. If the market slows, we can kind of let it settle in on its own to that mid-90s, as opposed to trying to really push that number to get to mid-90s. When the stats met, it was good enough.
Chris, do you have the historical data on this information, on this chart, like the last five years?
You'll see that momentarily.
Yep.
If you want, I can give it to you in numbers as well, but it'd be after the fact.
Yeah, yeah, the raw data I like to kind of look at for the trial.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet that feeds basically all the graphs in here. It has all the new growth, all the commercial, industrial, residential, personal property values going back to 2002. So any of these graphs you see here, I have a spreadsheet that feeds them. Median value went from 453.6 to 503.1, increased to 49.5, and a little more than, you know, a little higher than the average. Interesting thing here, if you remember your stats class, median means equal number of properties higher than lower, which means the majority of properties, single-family homes in Douglas are now worth more than half a million dollars. I just, that stood out to me as kind of surprising.
The average is almost a worthless number, it's really the median that's the...
For statistic median, yeah, yeah. So here, you can see the graph showing all the values in town. So, what I find most interesting is, the year before COVID, 2019, we're at a billion. Seven years, the town has doubled in value, in taxable value.
So what happens, and this is a great historical, what happens if, like, next year, we start to come back down in values?
I'll show you another slide later on. So here's our values going all the way back to 2002.
Yep.
Again, I had this all on a spreadsheet, so I'll get that to you, to at least distribute to the board. So we filled in our numerator on our tax rate calculation, we'll work on the, we filled in the denominator. Numerator is far simpler. It's one page here, and it's one page on the recap. You can see last year's levy limit, we get 2.5% of that for 556,000. New growth, if anyone's seen, our inspectors started going out this week to look at, anyone that had permits this year. So that last year, we had 276,608, that's additions, renovations, new houses, things like that. Subtotal, $23,077,998. Debt exclusion, this is servicing debt that has been previously approved, so this is just paying, making our loan payments. Maximum allowable levy, $24,597,44. Excess levy capacity, each penny on the tax rate represents $20,000 of revenue at a $2 billion valuation. So if we were, we had to take a penny off of the maximum amount we could collect, otherwise we'd be collecting more than we could legally collect. So this is mathematically, what we can collect is $24,583,266. If we added one more penny to the tax rate, it would be above what we could legally be allowed to collect. So it's just mathematically what we have to leave on the table. So, fill in the numerator, fill in the denominator, let the computer do the math, we're looking at an anticipated tax rate of 12.07. Gene and I still have work to do and things got to get certified, so there could be changes to that number, but nothing, nothing drastic. So, to answer your previous question, what happens if the values go down? Assessors always say, values go up, tax rate goes down. Conversely, what happens, tax rate, values go down, tax rate goes up. So you can see here, 2008, whoops, next up clicked, values started going down, tax rate went up. Here's your anomaly, in 2019, we did the override, you can see values went up, tax rate goes up, taxpayers get unhappy. And then, starting with COVID, the values go up, you can see the, you know, the tax rate line goes down as drastically, because it's driven by how much we can legally collect in taxes. So if the values go up more than 2.5%, the math says the tax rate has to come down.
Yeah, I don't think we've, showing the greater growth of over 10 years consistently up. You know, at some point, you know, you have the foresight that maybe things slow, or, you know, curve, or peak, or top, you know, level off.
So the, that's really the revenue question, how much you're going to collect in taxes. This is just how it reconciles into a tax rate based on the tax base that's supporting it. So the $24 million and change that we're collecting in real estate taxes, we would still collect, it would be a higher tax rate over a lower tax base to reach that number.
Fair enough.
It's really just a simple mathematical formula.
Okay.
How does this translate into tax bills? Oh, and I should have noted, I'll circle back to that. You can see, on an average tax bill, it was up about 1.47%. Median tax bill, it was about 1.65%. Bit of an explanation here, if I circle back to the revenue, I mean, the levy limit side. In FY 25, our debt exclusion, our debt servicing cost was around 1.9 million. Now we're down to 1.5 million, so it's about $400,000 less debt service this year. And that's driving a large part of that, you know, why they're closer to 1 and 1.5% versus 2.5% you would expect under Prop 2.5. You also have then the mix of what properties are, went up more than others, commercial, industrial. But the majority of this is based on that reduction in the amount of debt service and cost. Value distribution, so we put all this in, and this is where it starts getting into the classification hearing, and what's important for that. We are at 85.6% residential, that's actually up 3/10ths of a percent from last year, and that was just a strong residential year. I mean, last year, we were 5, 5 and change on the increase in residential values. This year, we're 10.7%. So that was more strength in residential, whereas we've been looking at growth in commercial over the past couple of years. So we're here at the classification hearing, deciding on what they call sometimes a SIP shift, C for commercial, I for industrial, P for personal property. Section of the law that allows you to shift the burden between classes. I'd like to make clear, shifting just doesn't change how much the town collects in taxes, just changes what class of property pays those taxes. And I'm here to present you the options and explain it to you. Classes of property, I think, pretty self-explanatory. This chart here is historically the residential SIP mix. You can see last year, we had a large warehouse come online, so we went from about 7.5% commercial to 15% roughly, and that stayed kind of flat this year. Like I said, a 3, 0.3% decrease in commercial industrial. Issues that I like to think of when we're thinking of the residential tax factor or the SIP shift, percentage of large businesses to small businesses, sometimes you feel the urge to say, we're going to go get that big business and make them pay a bigger share. You don't get the choice of really not hitting your small businesses at the same time. This is, I think, the biggest challenge where Douglas is at, small relief for residential properties and outsized burden on commercial industrial properties. We really, you know, only offering a small amount of savings, but really turning the screws to the commercial industrial. And then more theoretical, will a SIP shift negatively impact commercial industrial investment to the commercial industrial properties due to expenses, municipal services? You think of residents, they move into town looking for schools and roads and commercials looking for infrastructure and cost of doing business. So real estate tax becomes that cost of doing, is part of that cost of doing business. So what does shifting the burden look like with the numbers fall this year? Top line here, flat tax rate, 12.07. Taking one, look down at the second line, one penny off the tax rate turns into 12.13 on the commercial, so a 6 cent increase for every penny off. Six to one, 85.15, that's exactly what you'd expect. And that holds true all the way down. So essentially, every penny you take off of the residential rate, every little amount you save them, you're hitting 6 cents on the commercial industrial. In terms of tax bill, I'd like to find a better way to present this, but average homeowner, take 5.22 off, average commercial, average industrial, it's the best I can do, but they're not homogeneous like homes. You know, $33, $33 increase for a commercial and 177 on the average industrial. If you really look at the residential and commercial, you can see they're not too far off on the average values, but a $5 savings is a $33 increase. Just showing that another way, you know, the blue line would be your flat tax rate, green line is residential savings, and red line is corresponding that residential savings, the increase in the commercial rate relative to the flat tax rate. Recap figures, I'm supposed to by law or regulation let you know, so I throw them out on one slide and have them there for you. Excess levy capacity, we talked about, 13,778, the difference between what we can legally collect, what we can mathematically collect, and new growth, 276,608. The assessor's recommendation is that the town adopt a residential tax factor of one, and that would be an estimated tax rate of 12.07 per thousand.
Which is similar to other communities, budding communities.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only, I know, I'm just trying to think of a lot of the other communities that are similar size.
You really want to look at average and median home values when you want to compare to other communities, because looking at the tax rate, you're not taking into effect an override that Douglas adopted several years ago, potentially what debt exclusions there at, where they are in those debt exclusions, where ours are, I think, closer to sunsetting than starting, where we do have one coming on. So looking at a tax rate from town to town is probably not a good parameter, but look at the median values of properties is probably a better, better gauge.
Yeah, so we'd have one tax rate for residential, commercial, everything else, which is, similar sized communities have that, that's why. I know other communities have a different commercial tax rate and residential.
Oh, yeah, as far as splitting rate, yeah, I don't want to, yeah. I think that's why we'd be more aligned with similar communities of size of ours.
I think our philosophy of keeping the rates the same has borne fruit in the Cubes project, and if the tax rate had been much higher, maybe they would have looked at another area, but I think we rewarded the homeowners by building up the commercial industrial tax base.
Any questions?
No, just a comment, say, that's nothing to sneeze at, having a look at that graph. But the amount of green over the last two years versus what we inherited from years ago, it's really remarkable, so it's a team effort, but kudos to everyone.
No, I agree with a single tax rate, I think it works well, up to now, and I don't see any reason to change it. It's a minimal benefit to the prop, and the residential market, but it's a much bigger impact, because that, those figures you gave us, that was based on a penny for all three.
Penny reduction for...
No, no, no.
Yes, yeah, each time you took a penny off, there's an additional 6 cents on the...
So all they have to do is get to the, get to the one I was thinking of. Shifting the burden.
Yeah.
So each one of them represents a penny?
Yep.
Values?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's what I was getting at. So if you reduce the residential market by a penny, it's six times that number for the residential.
For the commercial.
I mean, for the commercial.
Yeah.
I'm still tired from last night.
We all are.
And Matt put a Dancing Chickens song in my head, so. All right, thank you.
You missed a vote on, single?
Yeah, and just, Gene has a few things to fill out to, for the form to be ready for signatures, so we don't have the form for you physically signed tonight. We'll have that ready as soon as Gene and I get working on it tomorrow.
Okay.
You want a motion on it?
Yep, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2026 residential tax factor of one.
That do the trick for you?
Did we even open it?
Yeah, we did. We opened it, yeah. I move we close the public hearing.
Motion by Hal, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like me to do that again?
Yeah, now we're ready for a motion.
So I'd like to move to adopt the fiscal year 2026 residential tax factor of one.
There we go. All right, motion by Mike, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5 to 0, we're good.
It is not my intention to be Robert's rules.
No, no, it's, I wasn't sure if we had other...
Champion, right?
Yeah.
I'm more of a Bob guy.
But it was a good option.
No, it all gets by us. All right, thanks, Chris, appreciate your time. Thanks for the... All right, number six, we're going to review and discuss the scores for Loving Gleason Court, RFP, and possible votes.
Here you go. So this chart is more or less self-explanatory, it is a summary of the five selectmen's scoring of the different proposals.
So, just note that if you add up my second line, it's actually 11, not 7, on the second section.
Yeah, it might be a bad formula minus, too. Yeah. All the numbers are the same, but they don't add up to the end.
It's okay.
Oh, I see, I see.
It should be 11.
The bottom of the chart, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And then, that would change Hal's as well, to 11.
The total.
Yeah, the total's right, yeah.
The bottom.
Yeah. Yeah. This is what happens when you have...
Definitely, your candy's malls.
This is what happens.
I would be using this the last 24 hours.
That's what happens when we have back-to-back meetings.
51 to 40 is where you end it.
Yeah, okay.
I see, okay, yeah, you're right. Yeah, so these, that number actually doesn't matter at all.
Yeah, yeah, it still adds up to the same. I just did the math real quick, we're good. Be 44, then plus 7, so it's still 51, we're good there. Yep.
So it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if any of the members would want to discuss their score, I think you have one that has a different final outcome. Ben Davies.
Yep.
The purpose of having the score sheet and reviewing the quality of the proposal against the scoring without the price is to give you a sense of just the appeal of the proposal to you. We did ask the bidders to submit prices. If you want to discuss your proposals, go ahead, if you want me to open the pricing, just tell me.
I'm just glad I'm kind of in the middle.
I think that was the goal.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, four of us were on, on the same page and similar input, which is, which is good, it's a good balance, it's, you know, that was it.
It's a good approach, Matt, I like it, because you did this timely...
It was, you know, very clean, going through it for the first time, and I think it's kind of like what, you know, I took it as what I envisioned and what I looked through and stuff like that, and what was my perspective on everything, so I think that's good. And I like that, you know, hey, not all of us, you know, sometimes we're 5-0, sometimes we're 3-2, sometimes we're 4-1, it's good.
Scissors.
All right. Thought it was a good process.
It's not me, it's the state sets it up, just trying to administer it.
Is that shrink wrapped or taped?
Yeah.
I knew you brought it home and had to kid wrap it.
I do have a kid who would do this.
Did I?
Yes, he would. I'd rather have him tape and stuff, lightens on fire.
Yeah.
Just saying. Not sure how we get to this much people. Looking for a number. Still looking for a number.
I would just say that I think both proposals were really well-put-together packages and stuff like that, had good visions, translated that in the bid packages that were submitted, so it was, made it easier to look at each one and see how it's similar but different, so.
It's really an exciting moment for the town.
It is.
You know? When we had to walk through, I tell you, the memories of second grade, third grade, you know? It was just...
Maybe it just came out from the woodwork and all, or...
Yeah.
Said hello.
Did you stand in the corner one more time?
We used to go in the closet. I used to go in the closet. They used to put me in the closet.
They ran out of corners?
The thing? I used to go, have to be sent to the coat room.
The coat room?
So I went to check everybody's lunch while I was in the coat room, took it to the edge of the situation.
I would say, in my day, after they ran out of corners, then they threw you in the closet.
What was more impressive is it's more of the same.
Yeah.
It looks exactly like...
She's got great bone. She's got great bones.
The chimney, that everything.
The other building that reminds me of, that one there, is in Worcester, is as soon as you get on 146, you know, right there, where you get up on the 290, is the old schoolhouse there. That's...
Well, here it is. So in terms of the tally scores, the meeting group's proposal got a score of fifty-one. New Colony's proposal got a score of forty. Why can't people just follow instructions?
Are you guys in New Colony?
No, he's got a tomorrow.
You point to it, maybe?
I'm going to read it till you can understand why I'm annoying. Monetary consideration, total $440,000 to be applied as follows. You don't get to do that. You offer a price. Three hundred and ninety thousand to the purchase of Phase One land and existing school building, fifty thousand towards road realignment funding. That's not an answer, but I want to say three hundred and ninety thousand. Because we don't negotiate things like donations to road projects as part of the purchase price. Purchasing a piece of property.
We'll decide.
But you now have a problem. So your low score is the assessed value of the appraised value is three hundred and ninety, and you've been offered the appraised value. Your much higher score at projects, $10,000.
The proposals, they're drastically different, in my mind anyways. Can they be rejected if you don't feel that it fits into the, what the overall thought is for the property, regardless of what the score is and what the price is? I'm trying to make it as vague as possible, so I'm not saying something about any particular proposal.
So every single thing we do says the town may reject any or all bids in the best interest.
Start over again.
Okay. That answered my question.
I mean, as the chief purchasing officer, ten thousand is insulting. It's naive and, that's just absurd. And, but we don't like the proposal for three ninety, according to the score, which is not close. That's kind of where you're at. I can't justify under procurement law deviating from the appraised value by three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
No, no, that, yeah, we, we can't, there's no way we could do that. That's, you know, we, the, you know, yeah. So the other thing is, is that if, again, in a situation, in this, you know, unique, if someone meets the threshold of the, of the appraised value, and, you know, if you, again, if you eliminate, disqualify, you know, a bidder for not meeting the threshold of value, you know, that's a reason for disquali, I'm just, I mean...
It is, but you're not stuck with the other one.
No, true.
No, it's not like a RFP for work. They have to take the lowest bidder or, not the same thing. That's why I asked that, because I have concerns about a particular proposal that I don't think is a good fit for that area. That's why I worded it the way I did. So is there an option to re-advertise?
Of course, there always is, right? You try again.
Yeah, we could wait for the spring and/or another window, early spring or something like that. Again, what?
For ten thousand, I'd rather put extra money into it, knock it down, make it a downtown parking lot, to be honest with you. But I would like to keep the building.
Yeah.
That's my desire, but I'm just saying for that low of a bid.
Yeah, I don't think...
On the other hand, if somebody had offered three, what, three ninety a year or two ago, you would have said, "Take it."
Not with the proposal that came with the tag. I would never take that. Because logistically, it doesn't work for that particular street. It'd be a traffic nightmare.
Was that not just a proposed Phase Two? I assume I know what you're talking about.
It's a build-out. It's a, it's a...
It's a whole new building.
A whole new building attaching to it.
Forty-eight units?
Yeah.
Twenty-two units?
Yeah, and I think...
And then there's another option for a potential purchase of another piece of property to add on to that. That particular street, there's a tremendous amount of traffic on that street, between the school traffic, senior center, the post office. It'd be a challenge with having fourteen units or twelve units, not fifty-six or fifty-two.
Yep. I don't disagree. I think the concern also just preservation of the building. I think, you know, having seen some past meetings of folks that, you know, sat on that committee for the building and everything else, and I think it was always, you know, about preserving the buildings and the look, you know, and I think that's an important aspect. So, all right.
Building itself, I think, I think all can capture trying to keep the general characteristics of the building. It's just the additional things that came along with it. I didn't look at any architectural drawings in detail that they weren't provided, just rendering. I think they would go through that detail to try to make a three-story building, forty-two units, match that building. Wouldn't it be economical?
Yeah. Yeah, but also, you know, escaping the school and experts when they did the build-out on that one, they attached it in the back. I don't Blanchett School or, okay.
And was it on Hartford Ave or right off Hartford Ave?
It's on Hartford Ave, the front face of it, and then the back is. But I think that's, I think it's just a different layout. Like, I would have, if someone was to, you know, purchase a building, do an addition, I would have thought, go out the back and leave the front as a parking lot, because it's a nicer serviceable, and you get the look of the building area, so.
What, on this particular building? On us?
Yeah.
The only problem with that is it has to be in a different part of town, because the traffic is just going to be a huge problem now.
Yeah.
It's already a problem, and people complaining about, just about getting taken out coming out of the post office now, and we don't even have the traffic.
So one-way in, one-way out, and I would, I would fear the other entrances through the school would be utilized also.
Yeah.
Not that...
That would be my concern.
We can move forward and, you know, move on, you know, and revisit.
So what's the process? Do we take a vote to accept or reject?
You would, if you're going to reject all bids, that would be the motion. And then directly to re-advertise.
Is everybody ready for a motion of that? I make a motion to reject the all bids and proposals for this project.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to have Matt re-advertise.
Or is that an extra?
I think we can hold off on that.
Another agenda.
Yeah, I think we'll hold off, and we get the time of the season and stuff like that, so. All right, moving forward, number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good evening. Yep. Number seven, the easement from Depot Street to the primary school, discussion?
Yeah, so I asked to have this put on, it's been talked about by many people throughout the years. I looked into it eighteen months ago, maybe, and Chris Pupke assisted me in looking up the deeds, and we actually have a deed at easement, because I was always curious about this infamous path.
The walking trail?
Right. It's like, do we own it, do we not own it, or anything? We actually have a deeded right to it. So when the primary school was a woodlot by, I don't remember the individual's name, it was a deed at easement that came down, and that came with that. We bought the primary school, we inherited that easement that comes down. So we actually have a deed at easement through there.
Okay.
To the note, I did ask the chief for his input, if it would be beneficial to him, and immediately agreed that it would be, for the safety of the school system, to have an emergency access. And this isn't for everyday traffic, whether it is a gate or something that goes up on the top, but God forbid something was to happen, the quickness that you're going to be able to address the situation is very important. We've done a lot of things over the years, past few years, to try to enhance security up at that building. I think this would be just another added piece that's very critical to that particular piece of property in town.
No, I'm glad to hear that you discovered it and researched it. I've taken the trail many times as a youth, and I can say my...
Youth?
Youth. As well as my...
One youth, two youths.
Two youths. As well as, as well as my sons and stuff like that, so what do you, what's the chief have in mind you want to...
Well, the chief doesn't have anything in mind. I just asked him if it would be beneficial. I did talk to Matt briefly about this, whether or not we put it, added into one of Matt's goals to push this forward, or we need a vehicle to get there, right? No pun intended, but the town administrator would be the most advantageous to help move this along, because he has direct communication with all departments and anybody that's needed to make this happen.
So what I would do is recommend to you that we retain, and I'm working with Cheryl, have a much more affordable option for us to run title than what I've been thinking about for Main Street, which, I'm going to switch gears on that, too, by the way, so that title attorney doesn't respond to messages. So I'm going to go through the title attorney we use in the tax collection area.
Okay.
And it's much more affordable, but I would want title to be fully run, because this is a bit of an odd, these are old lots on an old road.
Yeah.
And when we've looked in the past, there's definitely an easement, but later deeds don't reference the burden. You can't make the burden go away by just deciding not to put it in the deed. So I think that's what we're looking for, a title opinion to be, that the easement was never extinguished in any way, because it was always in the town, and never given up by the town. There would be some research that would be necessary to document whether that's true or not. This is by far the most effective and efficient way to get from the police station to the school campus. We did explore options, and I'm looking at, it's like we've owned it, it was, I was chairman at the time, it's been a bunch of changes, but we walked with the superintendent of schools and with Bob and Eric and Bob Sullivan, because I think we were looking to piggyback the quest for a new well for the town would require an access road, so the access road to the well would double as an access road to the schools. The problem was, the town owns a piece of property that has frontage on Martin Road that is just barely wide enough, really, to have any kind of meaningful access. It's narrow. The neighbors have kind of, sort of, maybe put a shed and some other stuff on top of the town's property, so there would be the whole cowboy roundup of, you don't really own that, and what they would survey or improve it, and people, it's only fair, and then it just wasn't a good access point. It came down into a really steep grade and joined the driveway to the school in an inopportune place. So this, it looks like the highway to the schools, to the woods.
This came about, this was the same time that Tim worked on getting that back entrance into the snow lot up to the back of the school. And then the discussion was about up on Martin Road, and that's when I started looking, and it is, I'm like, what is this foolish thing? And then I went on and employed Mr. Pupke, and once you ask him a question about a deed he non-stop until he comes back with a whole bunch of highlighted stuff.
Yeah.
But he did a very thorough job, and I'm confident that it's there, but we just need to prove it out.
Yeah, and hopefully it's got some language or whatever that describes it in detail, which is good.
But it's wide enough for a significant emergency response vehicle to go, not just a police cruiser, but a ladder truck, anything. I don't know what it looks like on the other end, but I can see where it, is it clearing in the trees where it rejoins the school campus, and I think it's a pretty good spot for us to have access, but...
Honestly, from here to there, you're literally talking...
Ten seconds.
Yeah. Versus down to Main Street.
Hook, hook, yeah, I know.
And long-term, it pretty much solidifies this location for the police department.
Yeah, makes sense.
And that's something that we have to address at some point, but there are options in a piece of property to expand from.
Yeah.
We did last night take a item off your list, so there's room.
What's that?
We did take an item off of Matt's list last night.
What's that?
The removal of the brown building. So there's room.
Yeah, the item that had the second most questions of the night.
What's that?
Uh-huh. Yeah, the brown house. So it was all good.
At least I had some of the historical data for you.
I know. I was like, okay. No, no, I agree. I think from the public safety standpoint, this makes 100%, you know, definitely very beneficial for everybody involved, so definitely should look into it and make sure we can study it more and go forward. I definitely am involved with that. Anything else?
It makes sense.
All good?
Yeah. Honestly, it might cost a little bit, but it's a considerable improvement in the town.
Yeah.
It's a needed improvement.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks, Mike, for bringing that up. So number eight, as we move forward, license renewal, alcohol, common vic, entertainment, possible votes.
So just a procedural question. Is any of this a public hearing, or is that was just for the tax classification?
That was just the tax.
Okay, just making sure. When I see the bold heading, I'm just making sure that nothing under it was for that as well.
Okay, so we got, oh, we got three of them?
Three of them.
In early.
In early, yeah. For the next couple of meetings.
Douglas Village package, when are they expected to be completed with their project? Is this something that you would, yeah, would you, I was trying to be nice. Is this something that we would issue, or you...
You need to renew it, or they have to be treated like a new license.
Yeah.
All right, so it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be act of the habit?
No.
Okay.
Nope. And they had already gone through the process of the building layout with you guys. We did all that a few months back, too, for the new building.
Can we walk through it?
It's wide open right now.
Yeah. You can walk by it.
Yeah, it's an open floor concept.
So all paperwork's received. The only thing pending right now is inspections, which are scheduled.
Okay.
So if you do approve, it could be contingent upon passing inspections for these.
Yeah, we wouldn't release a license even if, well, the inspection's done, so.
Yep.
Excellent. Glad to see that these are coming in early.
Yeah, did we say we were going to do something different this year?
Did we?
I don't know. I think we had talked about doing something different.
How far back did we talk?
I don't think anybody can remember anything.
It's a bad night for memories right now, Tim.
Yeah. It might have been just a stern reminder that we chase people too much.
Oh, yes. Now I remember. Yes. It was something about last minute. People coming in last minute. We were...
All right.
These are due by the, for the holiday?
End of the year.
Yeah. Thirty-first.
Yeah. All right, so this time, but get it in, people.
Yeah.
Any objection to combining all three?
No.
Like to make a motion to approve the alcohol license for Douglas Village Package Tour, the alcohol license common vic for Gregory's, and a yearly entertainment for Douglas Orchards.
All right. Motion by Mike, second by Ross.
Contingent upon...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the stipulation that the one for Douglas Village Package, that's the only one that needs inspections?
No.
Or all three?
All, all.
Except for the entertainment one, I'm sorry. So great reason.
Contingent, Douglas Village Package and Gregory's is contingent on inspections by all required departments.
All right. With the, had it, motion by Mike, second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Five oh. Good. All right. Next up, we have grant acceptance, possible votes. The Adult Social Center, FOMA grant, and the CMRPC, Mumford River, MVP 2.0, seed project implementation grant. So Matt?
Well, the first one is easy. The senior center gets a FOMA grant every year from the Office of Aging and Independence. It's usually right around the same amount. Since it's a formula, we get funny numbers. This is $15,664. The CMRPC grant is from the MVP, which is municipal vulnerability, preparedness, seed project implementation. I love these planners and their goofy... Gilboa Street Pocket Resilience Park.
Yeah.
Probably called that so they could use the word resilience in a sentence and qualify it as an MVP grant. I'm not going to complain. We got $50,000. The point is to envision and plan, you know, take real steps towards making that parking lot on Gilboa Street into a public access point.
Yep.
Make it safe from traffic. I kind of hinted at this last night at town meeting. Sequester the space from traffic. We have an obligation as part of our maintenance of the dam to take down some of the vegetation along the banks that has a tendency to fall into the water and mess up the dam. And just make it a nice, clear, open area for people to go. And now that we own the whole pond, we're going to let people, potentially let people, you know, throw a kayak or canoe or take their kids fishing in a safe place that's in the open and where there's fish. So I think it's a really cool idea. It might marry up very nicely to longer-term plans for the riverwalk because this could be the terminus of it. And it'd still have parking, maybe you could get out and ride a bike, simple things like So this is, was pursued by CMRPC and they got the grant. So it's a, it's a good start on something we own most of the property now as a town, so that we can be able to do it.
Would you envision digging up some of that concrete?
Absolutely not.
No?
Take of it as a cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Time capsule.
So I might put something on top of it to really make sure it doesn't come up.
Fair enough.
All good as long as you don't scratch the service.
Yeah.
There's things we can do to manage the stormwater there. Push it back towards the street. We do have stormwater, catch basins there. I don't know if it's a split rail fence. I don't know if it's island type thing. I don't know. That's what this is for.
Yep.
They're going to study that stuff and make it look nice for us.
Are they looking to do like a conceptual, the $50,000 is going to be utilized all by them?
You should end up with a nice conceptual plan.
Okay. And then, and then the cost or whatever associated with that conceptual plan?
Well, because it's in the MVP program, you might be able to take the plan and go to get an action grant.
Okay. Excellent.
Public recreation is best fun if you can, grants, even if you have to match them.
Agreed. Okay. This is good stuff. Cool. Any other questions, thoughts? One question, Matt. How did, how did the CMRPC one come about? How did, was it, they reached out when they were here or just in discussion with you?
No, they have a running conversation with Community Development Director John Chabro or Grant Opportunities.
Okay.
It's also the master plan committee is, but I think, I don't know if they've, maybe select one, Smith. I think you've discussed this in general. Let's look at the board over there. I see.
Yeah, I think it was just a quick little shout out type of thing.
But it marries up to the bigger concept of trying to do something.
It all kind of gel and work.
No, it's good, it's good to know how these come about, you know, and this one surfaced it, you know. So I think it's good for the town. All right. It's ten, a motion to accept the two grants?
Two more.
All right. Motion by Hal. Any?
I don't, so I don't want to point out that I think we have to accept each one individually. Is that true?
Are you channeling Gene?
Gene wants us to do each one.
He's just afraid that she's watching.
So always watching. That was Ross, but not Gene, right? Always watching. All right, you want to do a...
Separate.
Separate?
I didn't even mean to bring it up.
Just to be safe.
Yeah, just to be safe.
After you do bring it up, then you say, I just mean to.
It's all good. All right.
All right, so you might as well run with it, Tim.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the $15,664 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Aging and Independence for the purpose of funding programs, supplies, entertainment, and other expenses for the center and the senior van.
Second.
All right. Motion by Tim, second by Hal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Vote?
On a roll, I will make a motion that we accept the $50,000 for the CMRPC EEA Mumford River MVP 2.0 seed project implementation grant for the purposes of creating the Kevin Morris food truck court. Strike that last part.
Exactly.
For $50,000.
There was resilience in that.
Yep. Yep. All right. Motion by Tim, second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Five oh. Okay. All right. Next, Economic Development Commission member discussion, possible votes. Number 10.
So this one is, I have a member of the Economic Development Commission that has been very hard to get ahold of. Obviously, they've been in a holding pattern because they didn't have a quorum. Now they do.
Yep.
So I reached out numerous times. I also had Bob Manerick reach out to this member numerous times with no feedback from them. So I'm taking that as a not interested in serving anymore.
When's the last time they met?
When they met, oh...
Three years ago.
It's probably a couple of years now. It's, it's been a while.
How many, how many seats are on that? Is it five seats?
Five.
And we've got three members now?
With this person made three.
Three?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of not, you know, adding one and then dropping one if needed, you know, so then you still can maintain a quorum or hold a meeting. But we don't have anybody interested in it.
Well, hold a meeting if you come.
But there's nobody else applied to be on the commission.
The issue I have with this, this particular member was the chair.
Yeah.
And the reason why I ask is when's the last time you met? You need to at least meet once a year, even if nothing's going on, because you have to do the reorg within 30 days after elections.
Yeah.
And if they haven't met in three years and there's no communication, no nothing else.
That's right.
I would support the request to, as a voluntary resignation.
Yep.
So I make a motion to, in that regard, to accept the request.
I'll second the motion. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All right. Motion by Mike, second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Hopefully he changes his mind and re-applys, but in the meantime...
Yeah. I'll show up one last time with the letter and see.
Yeah.
I'll keep you posted.
He might not even be in town.
Yeah.
He does still live in town.
Okay.
But checked off.
Oh, good.
Off the hook. I was absent.
Um, all right. For our packets, we get the October 21st meeting. You weren't at that meeting?
Huh?
I was everywhere. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were at the meeting.
I was there?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I'm still up though.
Let me make a motion to approve the October 21 meeting minutes.
All right. Motion by Tim.
I'll second.
Second by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Four oh. One abstained. All right. Number 12, town administrator's report. Trying to get you out of here before midnight?
I am going to be... Yeah. No, last night it was only 10:30.
Yeah.
Just in terms of a couple of things we've talked about in the past, the Employee Advisory Commission for our health insurance policies did take a vote to support the notion of keeping our existing retiree benefit plan as is regardless of the increase in the premium. There was a request to the broker to continue to pursue opportunities to take the premium down. And while he has made some overtures, it hasn't been successful. So we have agreed to keep the plan as is and pay the additional premium in the course of doing business. You know, there are some sectors in the economy that are experiencing inflation and it hits folks with fixed incomes especially hard. And at the same time, when you reach that point in your life where you start to utilize the healthcare system more aggressively and more frequently, you want to make sure you have a really good benefit. The town provides retirees with a very generous benefit. And for all those years that people worked for the town and didn't get a COLA and just kept coming to work and doing the best they could, it's kind of like the least you can do at 300 bucks or it's almost 400 bucks a month now, evenly divided. So the town pays 200, the retiree pays 200 for a plan that will at least has no deductible and a limit on out-of-pocket costs. So there's no out-of-pocket cost for medical care and pharmacy is capped at $2,100 a year. So that's, but as Medicare Advantage plans go, that's pretty done for the price. The breakfast was this morning, retiree first explained this to the retirees that attended the meeting, and there wasn't to be a significant pushback from our retirees, at least those that attended.
Correct.
So that's where we stand with that. There's an item I'd like to flag for the select board because I think there is an impending decision that I will tee up for you as detailed fashion as I can with significant amount of input from our public safety chiefs. But the cost of the software that we use to dispatch is really going to go up a lot. And what's happening is IMC, I think most people who follow this know these initials. IMC is the name of the software company. It's changed hands a bunch of times. It's been leveraged buyouts. Yeah, we pay the invoices Tritech, but I think Tritech is owned by another entity at this point. And we pay for police dispatch about $25,000 a year for that license. And we have a different vendor for fire and EMS that's about 14, call it 15,000 to make the number of about $40,000 a year, which is expensive, but it is a very highly capable system. It keeps records, records data, stores data, and then makes the operations work. You know, unfortunately, the vendor that created this programming monster isn't going to update it anymore. It's kind of like Verizon saying that I'm going to take care of copper lines. You can continue to have your copper lines until they fail, and then it's not going to work and then you don't have it. And so you can't really do that with dispatch because lives are on the line. And the calls we've been getting since 2020, late 2023 are just astronomical for converting the data and going on a go-forward basis. So, you know, going from 25 grand a year to, you know, a setup cost of 90, a go-live cost of 90, and then the annual subscription cost of 30, you know, it's, that's absurd, right? So that's $210,000 in one year for initial setup for a successor program. So we're going to have to look at what our options are for the configuration of this part of our operation. And there are options out there. But I want to talk to my chiefs and the union that represents our dispatchers in a great deal more detail before we bring anything to the select board. But at this point, I know enough to know that I am fiduciary duty to bring an option to you to make a decision because the numbers are really big, too big of a number to handle. We expect a BBT in the budget. We did finally have a meeting today. Now we're going on meeting number three with the superintendent, who I want to compliment, I think he's been very accessible. He's been very willing to listen to feedback and field questions. And even at times when we think we're tough and past each other, we don't talk past each other. We keep working until we figure things out. And I think what we've figured out is there's a timing mismatch between what you designate as a school year and the fiscal year budget process. So what we have to realize as, as one of the contributing communities to this school is when they set your budget, they're using the enrollment figures from the prior year because they don't get new enrollment figures until October. So in your fiscal budgeting process, you have to be explicit about what school year are you talking about and what fiscal year are we talking about? So what we figured out today, after a lot of going around, almost an hour, is that the plan for the reduction of the total population of Douglas students at BBT will show up in our fiscal 2027 budget, not 2028. That's kind of a big deal because if he hits that target, if the lottery system works up the way he wants to, we would be in a manageable range of, it would still be an increase in our assessment, likely as a result of the prostitute business. But it would be much more civilized. It'd be much more like, is in my budget forecast, it's something we can sustain. And that's a very important development. I alluded to this in an earlier update, but I think today we have confirmation that we're looking at this the right way, that use of numbers in fiscal years can be married up now to reality. That's actually all I... That's actually all I want to dive into at this point. An awful lot of the rest of what we've been working on, we've discussed last night at town meeting in some great detail. Are there any questions from the board on what we're up to?
Premature to talk about possible solutions to this 911 or dispatch software problem?
So I think the full range of theoretical possibilities are on the table. You have a regional entity that is looking for additional partners. And it is being supported very aggressively by state 911 funding. We have an option on the table to talk to a neighboring community that may want to work with us on a smaller entity. Exactly how that would flesh out. So you got one that's really cooked, baked, ready to think about, one that hasn't really thought about next steps yet. But then we can just continue to go this on a row. There were never going to be an easy decision about these kinds of issues. There is always gonna be, it's kind of like this, super money really fast, right? Because we opened 200 doors. So it went from being a really clear and obvious decision to one that wasn't. So that's, we're gonna explore all these options, but like I said, I really want to talk to the, to the folks that work for us about the details, what their hopes and aspirations are before I advance the conversation that far. But as I said, I know enough to know I have to bring you something to decide.
Just regarding the, going back to Levin Gleason, are you gonna share the packets with the building facilities group? For informational?
Yeah, I can.
Or just?
At their last meeting, we discussed what their role would be and they were comfortable having, not weighing in on it and just having the select board decide. I think we can go through this trajectory and maybe try to figure out what we've learned from it. I know enough about financial modeling for any kind of project to think that these actually represent two extremes. I think it's absurd. You know, honestly, if that number had been, had been six digits, I might have been able to sit here and say, look, you have forego, the developers foregoing the opportunity to earn a lot of revenue from building a second building. So we should roll with it. It's really not that much money in the cost of developing a building, 200 grand, whatever. But at least you could hold your head up and say, we got some money for the building. And the real estate that it's on, frankly. But at 10,000, I mean, you can't even buy half car. Can you even buy an engine, a replacement engine for 10 grand?
With one transmission, $10,000.
So I mean, that's just not, that's not a thing. And the other proposal, you know, frankly, just, so we're gonna reissue this. So I'll just put this out there as general cautionary note to bidders. Please do not build a building immediately in front of the building we're trying to preserve such that no one can see it. It's a historic pill thing. The whole idea of the RFP was to restore it because it had some beautiful elements to it. If you want to kick something off to the side, kick something off to the back, be reasonable about what you want to do. And at 390, again, you know, if you want to shave something off because you want to make it feel like you got yourself a good deal, that's fine, but I think you can arrive at a sweet spot for the number of units you need to build that will work with this. My only other cautionary tale to bidders is pay attention and only bid on what was put out. We didn't put out the redevelopment of that whole part of town or the redevelopment of the road or this, that. We want you to buy the building and redevelop something there and tell us what it's gonna, what you're willing to pay us for. So that's, they got a little bit far afield. I understand the ambition and enthusiasm for a notion, but at the end of the day, we can only award projects, any project, whether it's supplies or services or real estate based on what is in the RFP, what we're asking you to buy or sell. There you go. We asked a simple question. Do you want to get out of here soon? Make me stop talking because I drank coffee to get through this.
Do something we need there.
I had that in your, your report.
So this is a really fun board to be on, and I was hoping that somebody would be absent before we made the nominations.
No, there's stipulations, so we're all free and clear of that.
So we've never been able to do this. So there's the Worcester Regional Transportation Authority of Wurden has, is this an advisory board?
It's actually a voting member seat.
Voting member on there.
Advisory board.
Yeah.
So if you put it out to the public, if anybody wants to serve.
Yeah.
Just don't have very many Wurden rides.
No. Does, I don't think it drives through. I don't think it drives through.
We get a tiny, believe it or not, there is some mass transit activity in town. Get a tiny amount of money every year. Trip miles cost us to get it. We deposit it. We file a report that says that we can't really spend the $3 anywhere. So we're accruing it. If somebody wants to serve, who knows, they might be, we might have a resident in town that.
We can post that opening along with the other one from Economic Development Board, so.
So we're economic development because it is a board. I think one of the things that people are misinterpreting is the Economic Development Commission won't do the work. We have a full-time staffer that is on salary who does the work. The EDC can have a huge role to play in advising the select board on what the community is willing to support as future development and what the community wants to preserve of its existing character and not see changed or enhanced. However it is, there is currently no conduit for that information to come back up through the select board except for, A, your elections. And anyone who grabs Mr. Manaric's ear and talks to him and tells him what the issues are. So it is an appropriate thing to have. It's just that they're not gonna sit around and have one monthly meeting and market the town to the universe based on an hour or two a month. That's not the task. The task is to provide Mr. Manaric with a public forum where he can update people on what's going on in town. That alone has value. There'll be videotape and minutes and people can read them. And for back and forth that help him refine the things that he wants to go after next on the record so that the select board can evaluate what policy steps you want to take to support them. So I, there's a, there's a there there.
There there.
But if people don't have meetings and they can't be on boards, I mean, I know we don't want to be harsh to volunteers, but sign up for it and do it.
All good?
Years ago, the commission organized a development forum for realtors and developers. We had it over the golf course, I remember, and maybe that's something that the commission would, might want to do again. Good luck. Even a better story to tell.
I'll change only one rule because I'm really old school about this. If you're gonna have an economic development meeting about your town, you have it in your town. That's the only thing I can assist to.
Any other questions, comments? We're all good. All right, moving forward, number 13, any topics in non-anticipated 40 hours in advance? Any roundtable discussions? All good? All right. Standing motion adjourned?
Come on.
Motion by Mike, second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing.
Good night.